Before we begin this afternoon's meeting, I do want to take, please bear with me, a few moments of your time to say a few words. I always, as a board member, look forward to this, recognizing our students, celebrating their accomplishments. We meet monthly as a board, and we make decisions, but we never truly know the results of those decisions until evenings like this, and this morning at the high school, a packed house, and this past Saturday when we celebrated seven seniors. So I just want to say that this is why we are on the board. This is our purpose, so that we can see that our decisions do have a positive impact on our students and staff, and ultimately, the community. So, thank you for bearing with me, that's all I wanted to say. So without further ado, I will now begin this afternoon's board meeting. It is now 6:02 PM, and I call this meeting of the Fair Independent School District to order. Let the records show that a quorum of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Please stand.
Yes, if you'll please bow your heads for prayer. God of wisdom, we thank you for all the gifts you have given us throughout the school year. We praise you for giving us life, for saving us in Christ, and for choosing us to be your people. As we come to the end of this school year, we voice our gratitude for the good things you have done in us, and we praise you for all you have shared in the work of the school. Lord, we thank you this evening for all who are in attendance, all the wonderful students, the parents, the staff. It is amazing, our beautiful community of LaFeria. Lord, please help our students to make good choices. We thank you for an amazing staff here at LaFeria ISD. Thank you to our many donors that gave scholarships this morning. Lord, please be with our community and those who are sick, those who have lost loved ones, and we thank you for all you do for us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free, open, representative, sovereign, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, honorable, the Texas flag, and the allegiance to the Texas state of America, one indivisible,
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of April 15, 2024, and April 30, 2024? I have a motion by Mrs. Martinez. And I have a second by Mrs. Johnson. All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried, 6-0. And now the reason we are here, to celebrate our students' achievements.
Good evening, President Castillo, members of the board, and Mrs. Stotes. At this time, we'll begin our celebration of student achievement, but we'll begin with Coach Foster.
We've experienced quite a bit of success this spring, and definitely a lot to do with kids sacrificing and coaches sacrificing. So at this time, I would like to call it the head coaches. They'll introduce their staff and their team and tell you a little bit about each one of them. Coach Campos will start us off with girls varsity track, district champs, area champs, regional qualifiers, and state qualifiers.
Okay, I did ask Coach Foster how long this was supposed to be, and he said he's asked me for 45 minutes. I'm gonna be nice and I'm going 55. No, I'm just kidding. First of all, thank you all. And I made some notes only because I know how I can get. But first of all, I'd like to thank the parents for their support for four years of our seniors and those that are just starting off with us. The community for always coming out and supporting. I've had people that have been part of the LaFeria community that are like, "Coach, it's been a great year for you." And yet, that tells me that they're reading up on what the young ladies have done. I'd like to thank the administrators, all our administrators, our superintendent, and of course, above all, our school board for always supporting our programs. Thank you all very, very much. I would like my coaching staff to come up with our track and field team that is present. A very wise coach said a long time ago, when he was asked, or she was asked, "What kind of team do you have, Coach, this year?" And the wise person said, "I won't know till 20 years, 30 years from now." But I know what kind of team these young ladies have been for four years. So I'm gonna go ahead and start really quick. We will then introduce, I will introduce the coaching staff, I will introduce the team, and then they will go and thank the school board for all their support. So, I do have a quote, and it starts with "level of commitment." And I'm sorry if I get a little nervous, but here we go. "Life is constantly testing us for our level of commitment, commitment to self, to groups, teams, jobs, education, family, et cetera. Life's greatest rewards are reserved for those who demonstrate a never-ending commitment to act until they achieve. It's not words that matter, rather, your level of commitment to the cause." Thank you, Lionettes, for your level of commitment. It is the reason why we can proudly present the four-time district championship team, the four-time area championship team. We have regional qualifiers. Ladies, if you've been a regional qualifier, go ahead and step forward. Thank you, you may step back. And among our miss, we have a four-time state qualifier earning two bronze medals at the state level. Leanna, can you step forward? These ladies and their parents, no doubt, make our job much easier. Coach Lopez, Coach Fraga, Coach Renteria, Coach Martinez, and all the other coaches that step up to help us. We thank you all from our heart, I thank you all from your heart. You make my job much easier, and the girls really enjoy you all helping them out. So thank you, coaches, I really appreciate you. Now, this is to my seniors. Incredible leaders, respected, passionate about the competition, united, dedicated, and most importantly, great people. The Lionettes Track and Field Senior Class. Your leadership was a key component to the four years of accolades. It's four years, not one, two, but four. You put a team ahead of self, which is easily said, but much harder to put into action. You gained the respect of your teammates and coaches, the biggest compliment you can pay to each other. Your legacy will stay with our program. Thanks for an incredible ride. You will be missed, and remember, you will always be a Lionette. Okay, I'm supposed to allow these young ladies to go? Julies? What, are we gonna shake hands with the scooper man?
I'm gonna need about three rows. Are you still nervous? Five, six, you guys. So, short a few fronts. Board members, please, you guys, give us some back. Make sure you guys are windowed, please. So let's make windows. Your head needed to be in between. So make sure you needed to be in between sides of your face.
While they're taking the photo right there, parents, again, just want to say thank you for all your efforts and sacrifices getting to and from practice. And ladies and your staff, thank you, congratulations. Next up, we have Coach Bella and the Track Boys, district champions, area champions, regional qualifiers, and state qualifiers.
Guys, I first want to start off with thanking everybody, administration, Coach Foster, our principals, Anna, she does a great job to open us up with all the things we bother with. The board members, we, it's got, track is a big, big, big commitment, especially to the kids. Thank you, parents. We started pretty much in December, and we go all out, and the kids love to run. Some of these kids, I tell them, they're like, "Guys, we gotta stop sometime to go home." And they're like, "No, run some more." I have to close the tracks with these guys. Guys, to be honest, who wants to run and feel terrible and run the next day? These guys. So, some of these guys I've had, I've only been coaching here at track the last two years, and so I know some of these guys, the seniors have been here with this program for the last four years. And we'll talk about them in a minute. First thing I want to do is introduce my coaches. Erin Romero, Coach Erin Romero. Coach, uh, Renata Lacerda. Coach Luis Fuglietta. Coach Luciano Avila. And Jaime Agüina, which is in a meeting right now, so he was anywhere making the tea. Guys, go ahead and line up over here, and then I'll announce you. Guys, I want to introduce our seniors first. Joaquín Trevino. Evan Torres. Michael Rizan. And Isaiah Memorial. I know, it's first time to go, I'm sorry. Guys, these guys, I've known them for the last four years, even though I wasn't coaching track. They're wonderful, wonderful kids. I'd love to have them around for another four years. I'm hard to see them leave. But they've done a great, great job for the last four years. Congratulations, that's a great job. Then I want to introduce, first of track team, Robert Gonzalez. Austin Bond. David Yafanka. Amias Avila. Devin Sanchez. Andrew Gohardo. Jose Garza. Nathan Salinas. Armando Morales. Anthony Morales. Evan Torres. I want to introduce guys, the guys that qualified for state, which is Anthony Morales, his brother, Armando Morales, and Evan Torres. They did a wonderful job this year, guys. They represented us. They got a third and fourth, and a main, hey, great, great job this year. Our long-distance program has done a great job, we've done a great job with them. Everywhere I go, they talk about us, about the distance kids, and we love it. Now, our other kids, have you seen her, go to the other districts? They, they talk about our sprint guys, and they underestimate our sprint guys and our mile relay. They always say, "How great, a small program that we have can compete against five A's and six A's." We go, and I know Coach Campos and I go to big, big trackings. We don't go to small trackings to get them ready for the state we need and regionally. So, they did a great job, I'm so proud of these guys, and can't wait for next year to win another district title. Hey, by the way, our boys have won 11 straight district titles.
And again, while they're situated, pictures, parents, I just want to reiterate, we really appreciate all that you do in allowing us to coach your young men in track. Next up, we have Coach Foster introducing a softball team, which was co-district champions this year.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to the 2024 Lionette Softball Team. Number one, Mia Mokenegra. Number two, Andina Valdara. Number three, Jenny Serna. Number four, Stephorn. Number four, Bea Quiros. Number five, Avery Ortega. Number nine, Anna Torres. Number 10, Carla Trevino. Number 12, Bianca Galan. Number 15, Angelica Sadania. Number 17, Michaela Mahia. And number 22, Rezika Bahal. I also have with me tonight, my assistant, Coach Renell. These ladies have worked extremely hard all season and finished the season as co-district champs. My staff and I are very proud of the accomplishments that these ladies have made this year. We look forward to years to come with our returning players, and we wish our seniors the best of luck on their next chapter. My seniors, please step forward. I want to thank these ladies for the past four years. We've had a lot of fun, and we were able to bring back to LaFeria two district champs while they were here. And we want to wish you the best of luck. We would also like to thank our parents, the school board, and our administration, and all our community members for our support this season. Congratulations, Lionettes.
And again, I want to sound like a broken record, parents. Again, thank you, as they're sliding over. We know the commitment and the sacrifice starts at a young age, and we get to enjoy some of those fruits as they grow up. And hopefully, we can continue those relationships as they carry on in life. Next up, we'll have our girls and boys powerlifting. Our boys' powerlifting coach is Coach Sanchez, and our girls' powerlifting coach is Coach Sol. Not to put them on the spot, but I'm afraid I'm having you sir, coaching boys just because we're having a few technical difficulties. Yes, sir. All right, if I can have the boys' powerlifting come on up.
I'd like to start off saying good evening, Superintendent Torres, President, Ms. Castillo, and board members, thank you for having us here this evening. I would like to turn it off by letting everyone know these individuals up here have shown themselves to be great student athletes. The dedication, discipline, sacrifice, self-motivation for being part of a sport that they love to do, and the countless hours that they was placed in the weight room average week. Sometimes I couldn't even get these guys to leave the weight room. It'd be 6:30, almost 7 o'clock at night, and they still want to continue working out. Okay, so these guys did put countless hours in the weight room. These students, to me, show what LaFeria has to offer, okay? Great students, very respectful, in class, on the field, in the weight room. Overall, great students, okay? I also like to thank the parents for allowing them to be in the weight room that long. Okay, I know it's 7 o'clock at night, but you guys still allowed it. Congratulations once again for the qualifying in regionals that are representing LaFeria ISD at state. Students are going to be our senior, Joseph Figueroa, regional qualifier. Ricky Barma, also regional qualifier. College sophomore, Gable Bruno, regional and state qualifier. Crystal, regional and state qualifier as well. Once again, thank you, Ms. Stotes, and thank you, Ms. Castillo.
And now, if I can have the girls' powerlifting, come on up. Before I begin to introduce these girls, I just want to take some time to thank everyone who helped make this pass season a successful one. Maintenance of transportation, Mrs. Stotes for helping us organize our meet, and Domínguez for being gracious folks and having us. Also, Mr. Casillas for showing up to our regional meets here in Edinburgh and in Kingsville. And Coach Davio Sanchez for helping us really get this season going amidst all the transition that was going on this year. And to my fellow coaches who helped us judge at meets. It really does take the community to get everything going for our student athletes, and all of your help is greatly appreciated. And also to the students' parents who were willing to bring in these girls at 5:30 in the morning for practice. I know that's not easy, so I really do appreciate that support and that sacrifice. This season was definitely a record-breaking one. The hard work and dedication of these young ladies paid dividends. They showed up for practice 5:30 all season long, and they quietly literally paid for all their success in blood, sweat, and tears, overcoming eggs, pain, sickness, amongst other adversities. They showed grace in victory and defeat, representing our district in true LaFeria fashion. The work ethic of these girls is unmatched, and I believe all of this success shows that. Here are some of the things that they have managed to accomplish this season. This year, we had 15 regional qualifiers, a Program I, nine regional medalists, five regional champions, and a total of, oh, and they also set 10 regional records, bringing LaFeria out to a total of 14 regional records, the most of any team in the region. And we also received Best Squad Award, Best Bench Press Award, and Best Overall Lifter Award. And we also managed to crown two state champions this year. Now, I'd introduce them. Madeline Gutierrez, regional qualifier. Rihanna Garcia, regional qualifier. Ariel Dove, regional qualifier. Karina Lial, regional qualifier. Demaryde Sanchez, regional qualifier. Tason Torres, regional medalist. Rihanna Garza, regional qualifier, state qualifier. Avery Ortega, regional medalist, state qualifier. Madison Aguero, regional bronze medalist, state qualifier. Kela Rosales, regional bronze medalist, regional death record, and state qualifier. Faith Gonzalez, could not be here today because she's over in bed. Regional champion, regional bench press record, and state qualifier. Kalalea Gonzalez, who is currently competing in state for UIL for science. Regional champion, regional bench press record, state medalist, and second-team academic all-state. Emily Avila, regional champion, regional bench press, squad, and total record, state qualifier, and she was also Best Bench Press Award, Best Squad Award, Best Overall Lifter Award. Julie Ramirez, regional champion, regional squad record, regional bench press, total record, and state champion. And Enisa Avila, regional bench press record, regional champion, and state champion.
And while they're getting ready for the photo, 5:30 in the morning, kicking them out at 7:30 at night, I just want to say thank you, parents, thank you, coaches, thank you.
I just want to say thank you, parents, thank you, coaches, thank you, teachers. Next up, we have our girls' golf, who were district champions, regional qualifiers, Coach Breenos.
Good evening. I want to start off by thanking our administration, our board, everybody who made this season successful and helped. My administration, also Domínguez for putting up with me, me now, along with tournaments and so forth. Mr. Lucio, thank you. Parents, thank you for having these kids out on the course also, early and late and so forth. My brother and daughter, a place for us. If I can have the girls come up, please? We're missing two of our girls today. Joey Flores and Alejana Breenos, they both made grad majors and had a training over at Vann today, they can be here, please. I'm going to introduce the ones that are here. We have our chief junior this year, Mia Munoz. First, Adriana Rios. And our only senior girl, Maria Pizana. Last year, at the end of the year, we set up some goals. We kind of fell short at District by a few strokes. And Regional, we didn't do very good at Regionals. So we had two goals this year. One was to win District, and the other one was to place in the top five at Regional. Well, we won our District, then we went and competed at Regional, and we were 11 strokes from going to State. We did come in in the top five. So these girls have been working hard. A lot of people always ask us, when does your season start? Give you an example. Maria's season started her freshman year, she just finished a couple of weeks ago. We play around, these girls play during the summer, Junior League tournaments, and from the time school starts to start again, they're playing. They're out there during the summer in the hot sun, playing tournaments, playing all day long and so forth. That's what it takes, to succeed. You've got to play around, you've got to compete against. Real quick, Karina received an award, two awards this year. She was one of the top girls in the Valley, from 6A all the way down. She was All-Ballot first team, and she was co-freshman of the year for All-Ballot. And Alejana, she was also All-Ballot second team. Some of these girls are some of the top girls in the Valley, from 6A, 5A, 4A, all the way down. They compete against, again, some of the bigger schools. You've got to compete against bigger schools in order to get better. So we have another goal for next year, to win District again. This time, our second goal is to win the Regional, which is a big possibility. We have everybody coming back, except for Maria, who's going to go to Texas State. But we wish her the best, and thank you for being with us for the four years. We appreciate it, and we give it to you.
Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Coach Sanchez and varsity tennis district champion and regional qualifiers.
I told myself I wasn't going to practice here. This is a very special group to me. I had had some of these young ladies, and even Lloyd, since junior, I got to teach him class. So to see them grow up to be the people they are today is just amazing. And this year, by surprise, they actually, the girls, won the district title, which we have not won in about four years. So they didn't realize there were the consequences of it so long, but they found out that we won by half a point. You know, we took it. So Pata was like, are you sure? I was going to go back and do the numbers. And sure enough, they did. I'd like to thank my coaches, Coach Moss and Coach Sanchez. They really made my life a lot easier. My tennis kids, please come up. Blake Gomez, he is a junior, and he qualified for Regionals for Boys Doubles. His doubles partner is Nider Vade because of Vann. We had six regional qualifiers this year, which is probably the most we've had in a really long time. So I was very proud of them. Susana Gonzalez, she was our, she got second place at District, and she also, did not know this, but when we went to Regionals, she played against the state championship. And let me tell you, she put up a heck of a fight, and it was just amazing, just watching her out there. Brianna Munoz is another senior that I'm losing this year. Danielle Gomez, another senior I'm losing this year. Natalie Moreno, another senior, and it's actually because of her point is why the girls actually won this year. Marisa Escamilla, she's our incoming freshman. She has some big shoes to fill, which we will get there in, so we're going to. Alena Isis again. She is girls' double regional qualifier. Her partner, Daniela Sanchez, could not be here because she's in Vann. And then just ahead of us, our champion from the girls' singles. And she actually made it to the second round at Regionals, and she actually played against the number two girl that's actually at State right now. So they have, we actually have a very rough regional beat, but ladies, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and treat will be missed.
Congratulations, 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 congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations. Good job, Coach. Good job, Coach. Good job.
Next up, we'll have our girls' varsity soccer, Coach Chavida. They were bi-district champs.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks again for coming, parents. Thank you very much for all the support that you have shown the team. Thank you for all the hard work and all of the late evenings that you had to come up to pick up your daughters from practices. It's something that we truly appreciate. And also like to thank the school board, all of the administration, for all of the support that we've had the longer years. At this time, I'd like to call up my assistants, Coach Iverde Rodriguez and Coach Mario Pérez. Don't say it often, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart that, you know, without both of them, my job would be impossible for me to carry out, so thank you both very, very much. Ladies, you guys have heard me say it before, that once you're on the team and, you know, we spend this much time together, I'm sure it's similar with others, but I believe I speak from all three of us on the coaching staff that it becomes almost family. You get to be more than just our students or athletes, get to be where, at least for my part, you know, I see you very close to your daughters almost. I care about, you know, not just what you do on the soccer field, but, you know, equally important, more important, what you do in class, and even more so, what, you know, the future holds for you. I hope to hear, and I wish you the best, and I hope that, you know, I get great, hear great things from you in the future, and I'm sure we will. At this time, I'd like to introduce the ladies that are here. We don't have the full team, but we have Yesenia Franco, Maria Hernández, Susana Salazar, April Vendoza, Aravet Sanchez, Selena Villera, Aubrey Bella, Chloe Bella, Jolie Garza, Jennifer Garcia, Elena Salas, and Ariel Pessina. First of all, let's say I'm very proud of that, that I remembered all of these first-stand athletes. No, serious note, just you are looking at the four-time bi-district champs and area qualifiers, led by, of course, our seniors, seniors, is it just Jolie and Susana? Our two seniors, thank you ladies. Susana joined us just recently, didn't play the four years for us. Wish we could have had her all four years. Jolie, I think most of you have seen her, either on the field, you've heard of her, so great asset that we have, one of the ones that we will deeply miss out there on the field. But I know she's going on to bigger, better things, so wish her the best. Good luck in everything that is coming to you, Jolie, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Good luck next year.
Good job, good job, ma'am.
Again, to the parents, thank you, teachers, admin, school board, Miss Costa. A lot of our success is because of the support of you guys, and just want to say thank you.
We will continue with the One Act Play. Mrs. Santos, Ms. Garcia, if you're here, please come forward.
Good evening. This is a core of a few of our One Act Play members. We have some who are also at Vann this evening. Our show this year was called The Tin Woman, which was about a young woman who received a heart transplant. But instead of rejoicing in her second chance, she finds herself dealing with survivor guilt and doubt. And to find closure, she arranges to meet the family of the donor of the heart. And we find them trying to deal with the grief of losing their loved one. And through their relationships, they both are able to deal with their grief and overcome and find closure. While it sounds terribly sad, it did have some funny moments, and explored some really interesting things that gave us as a cast an opportunity to discuss and examine. And that's one of the things I love about One Act Play, is it's not just about acting. They have to do character analysis, we discuss themes, and there's so much that goes into it before they can even perform there on stage. I have casting for members, a few of them who are with us from freshman year, and others who took the stage for the first time as a senior. Every year, I have seniors who say, I wish I had done this since my freshman year. And I say, yeah, me too. So anyone who is out there, students who thought, ah, I wonder if I should do that, yes, you should. You should audition and join us because we have a great time. We place, we advanced from District to Bi-District, and then at Bi-District, we were named alternate to Area. And while, you know, it's always bittersweet not being able to advance to the next level, I was extremely proud because the three shows that did advance were all former state champions. And Zapata, who was in our District and then, of course, in Bi-District, is competing on Thursday at the State One Act Play contest. So, you know, if, you know, we had extremely hard competition, and they did a beautiful show at Bi-District. Not with us tonight are Crianda Martinez, Nathan Gilchrist, and Adi Celis. But here with us is Nathan Fuentes, who was awarded Honorable All-Star Cast at the district. Ale Catatche, who at District got honorable mention, All-Star Cast, and All-Star Cast at Bi-District. Ms. Bella Banks. And Ms. Abby Guidero, Jolie Garza. Our stage manager, Daniela Sanchez, who received an Outstanding Tech Award at District. Isabella Saldivar, who got also an Outstanding Tech Award at Bi-District. And Yesenia Franco. My assistant director, Ms. Nettie Garcia, also could not be here with us this evening, but without her, we would not have had a lot of our stuff, she was amazing. One last thing I do want to share about One Act that makes me truly proud of this group is, unlike any other activity that I'm aware of, these kids, once we get set up, directors go sit in the audience, and they're on their own, they run the show. I can't coach them, I can't give them suggestions if something goes wrong. They have to deal with it. They are completely in charge from the moment the play starts until it's over. And I feel like it teaches them great responsibility, how problems solved on the spot. And I'm really excited about our next year. Thank you, guys, for a wonderful season.
Mr. Salzada and Mr. Davis will now be brought to the center for Efta.
Good evening, Superintendent Torres, President Castillo, and school board members. This was an outstanding year for our Efta members at the Rio Grande Valley Live Stock Show. This year brought us a record number of exhibitors and accolades we hadn't achieved in the past. Our members' hard work and dedication shows us the final results, and we appreciate the opportunity to share that with you tonight. This year... This year's cover girl representative was Mia Munoz. For breeding goats, we had Kennedy Cantú. For rabbits, we had Tamara Bonicio, who placed second with her rabbits and qualified for the sale of champions. Mia Munoz, who placed first with her Californian rabbits and qualified for the sale of champions. For market steers, Landon Cantú got fifth in class. Justin Alvaro was first in class and qualified for the sale of champions. And Harley Alvaro was first in class and qualified for the sale of champions. Junior breeding goats, Catalina Montivejos placed seventh for New Yorkshire. Junior breeding AOB cattle, Justin Alvaro, third place with the junior show and second place in the open show. Brianda Rodriguez, sixth place in the junior show and fifth place in the open show. Kaylee Reyes, second place in the junior show and third in the open show. Junior breeding sheep, Brianda Rodriguez, second place in his class. Brandon Rodriguez, first in his class and reserve breed champion. Brianda Rodriguez, first in her class. For market hogs, Kristen Hohosa, second place, Gero, and qualified for the sale of champions. Lauren Hohosa was ninth place with her light OPB. Catalina Montivejos was first in her class, breed champion, dark OPB. And junior showmanship champion, she qualified for the sale. Justin Alvaro was second place with his light cross and qualified for the sale. Harley Alvaro placed second with her dark cross and qualified for the sale. Brandon Rodriguez was fifteenth in class, Melanie Villaría fifteenth in class, and Yuli Vettel was fifteenth in her class. For market goats, we had Daniel Villaría, fourth in class, Genal Cardona ninth in class, and Alyssa Rodriguez tenth in class. Market lands, Andrea Rodriguez, seventh in her class. Brianda Rodriguez, sixth in his class of animals. Brandon Rodriguez, fourth in class, and Brandon Rodriguez, fourth in class. For western art, we had Mia Munoz, first place. And photography, Landon Cantú, first place also. Don't worry, we're almost there, I can read quick, alright? Wrapping up with our shop project division, shop projects, we had one team, who was Genal Cardona, Melanie Rodriguez, and Melanie Villaría, and they achieved an excellent rating and received first place with their barbecue pit trailer under 10 feet. Finn Moore got an excellent rating in second place in wildlife equipment. Justin Nino received an excellent rating in first place in metal art. Mark Harbin got an excellent rating in second place in shop equipment. And Mason Harbin received an excellent rating in third place in shop equipment. And the following students received an excellent and good rating for their projects. Jalissa Atkinson, Michael Cavassos, Kaylee Flores, Samantha Flores, Victor Flores, Emily Garza, Kety Hernandez, David Ramos, Juan Mena, Brandon Machaca, Summer Moore, Valerie Moruga, Mia Munoz, Erin Nino, Justin Nino, Kaylee Reyes, and Anna Torres. And this year, our FFA chapter managed to receive a High Point Chapter Award for the Shop Project Division, something we had not been able to do because, again, we want to thank again the parents, the exhibitors, and board and our administrators for all the support throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sanchez, may please come forward. Mr. Sanchez will now recognize the DSA law.
Uh, thank you, thank you once again, here again. If I can just, uh, teams up here, please. Once again, I'd like to, of course, start off by saying good evening, Superintendent Dotis, President School Board, Ms. Castillo, and board members. Once again, thank you for having us here this evening. Would like to start off by letting you know that these students, once again, show dedication, discipline, self-mobility, teamwork because they do have to work as a team, communication skills because there is a lot of communicating when they are going through these scenarios that they have to go through. Students have sacrificed several Saturday mornings to practice. We have one of the, Mr. Romano had them here at 8:00 AM till about 12:00, practicing over and over and over different scenarios. All want to be the best students that they could be in class and around campus. These students, once again, showed me what FFA has to offer here. They showed tremendous dedication to this pathway, to public service. Once again, congratulations to the Palm Springs Regionals that are representing FFA as the state first team. We do have, of course, Mr. Romano, this is our, was our Corona教师 teacher, but now he moved on to better things. But he did put in a lot of effort with helping these students, coaching these kids up while I was busy with athletics, so he's gonna be missed with our, with our group. We do have our new teaching partner, Mr. Mendos in the back, okay? He's gonna be having to put in some big shoes. First of all, our SWAT team, they placed first in regionals and qualified for state. My SWAT team can go take a step forward. First, I'll have a senior, Isabella Rodriguez, senior Andrew Diaz, junior Emma Zeta, sophomore Elizabeth Bettes, sophomore Stefano De Leon, freshman Brandon De La Rosa. Next we have is our building search team, they did get second in regionals and also qualified for state, you guys can move forward too. Introducing them is gonna be senior Ariana Torres, sophomore Elizabeth Bettes, once again, freshman Kayden Davila, and we did have one senior, Jaclyn Leha, that was now here today. Uh, once again, thank you for, parents for allowing them to be working with us after school on Saturdays. Thank you to Ms. Zubietta for helping us while we hosted our regionals here at the high school, to Mr. Casas for allowing us to host there at the high school. Board members, the same thing, Superintendent, same thing, thank you so much for allowing us to host the regionals here. And once again, thank you so much.
Congratulations, sir, good luck next year.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, sir. Good job, sir.
We will continue the Skills USA. We'll continue now with Mr. Budan and he will acknowledge the culinary arts.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Shep Omar, I'm the culinary arts instructor. I'd like to thank Superintendent Dostores, President Jean Castro, fellow board members, both staff and partners, our parents and students. I would like to introduce to you the 2023-24 of very early college culinary skills USA state qualifiers. First, we have Jesus Escobedo, third place, commercial bakery, state. Commercial bakery, cinnamon piece, sugar sculptures, state qualifier, state superior rating. Yesera Morales, commercial baking gingerbread, state qualifier, commercial baking cinnamon piece, sugar sculptures, state qualifier and state superior rating. A Marie De Leon, commercial baking cinnamon piece, sugar sculptures, state qualifier, state superior rating. And Marcasas, cake decorating, two-three level cake category, state qualifier, state representative, or state received, superior rating. Jennifer Garcia, state decorating, two-three level cake category, state qualifier, state received, excellent rating. Agnew Torres, commercial baking gingerbread, state. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our state qualifiers for the 2023-2024 skills competition. Thank you for all your hard work, thank you for all the support that we get from the school board, all the people at, at the high school. I couldn't do it without any of y'all, so thank you so much, have a great day.
This will be ended, will now continue with Skills USA, she will recognize computer science.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Board President, Mrs. Dotis and board members. Our CTE teachers wear a lot of hats, so some of them weren't able to be here this evening, so I just wanted to bring something for them. So for our computer science, Ms. Abigail Rodriguez is our sponsor. She wanted to express her appreciation to all the members in her Skills USA Computer Science chapter for their consistent hard work and commitment to their club. Their academic excellence, creativity, innovative contributions, and leadership has set the example for their peers and the future of their club. She'd also like to thank Ms. Zubietta, Mr. Casas for their continued support. She'd like to congratulate the following students for qualifying for state. Ali Adeta and Matthew Bettes for 3D visualization animation, Andrew Diaz, 2D short film animation, and Alyssa de Mosso for 2D short film animation. Andrew, if you'd like to come up. Again, thank you, students, for your outstanding dedication and leadership. You all have gone above and beyond for your club, working behind the scenes after-school hours for your projects, fundraising, and community events. Good luck to her seniors, Andrew is one of our seniors. We wish you a bright and successful future as you all embark on the next chapter of your life. Thank you. This evening, Ms. Megan Trivino is our sponsor for digital media. However, again, she wears many hats and she is our female sponsor for UIO Upstate, so she's not here this evening, but we do want to recognize her students. She sent a message, "Thank you so much for honoring and recognizing the students' hard work this evening." These students have dedicated countless hours during school, after-school, preparing for each competition. She is so proud of their achievements. Her organization had 12 students qualify for state. The students have grown in their design, video, and their soft skills. Students, I am so proud of what you have accomplished. You have breathed through awards of dedication and commitment. I have great expectations that your futures will be bright. Representing Digital Media Skills USA, we have President Renee Lara, Vice President Aubrey Cantú, Valeria Vidaia, state excellence in portrait photography, Inyanado Baniala, state superior in digital illustration, and Melissa Zapata, state superior in portrait photography. Congratulations, students.
Mr. Romano will now present on cosmetology, Mr. Romano.
Good evening, and I am Ms. Romano, the Cosmetology Teacher for La Vida ISD. I am honored to recognize our extremely talented Skills USA students. They have, they all have blown me away with their creativity and artistic talents. We made it to state last year as well this year, but our students sure made a name for La Vida ISD this year. Our Cosmetology Academy had not one, but two win state, so that means they got best of show. So they go and compete and they get, they go compete in their category and there is a seat of, a seat of magic in there. And they, they go against all districts, it's not bi-district, and Skills USA, it's everybody, okay? So they get to go and compete against everybody in the state of Texas and our students won best of show, okay? So that's a great. For it, we only are second here, that goes to show a lot for our students here, okay? So I was extremely, extremely blessed to be their teacher and to push them, and I know they were annoyed, we pushed them and tell them, no, you're gonna be the best, and they were. Words can't express how proud I am of them. Thank you for letting me keep you, keeping you inspired and making you the best. So I'll go ahead and announce. Madison Aguardo, first place superior. Arbet Sanchez, first place superior. Maia Gzman, she got third place, very good. I have Angelica, she got third place in a DVD Nowar from first year, that was pretty great. I've got Daisy also, Daisy Hidamio, she got a first place superior as well. I've got Daisy also. Daisy Hidamio, she got a first place, superior as well. How did it go, Art? And we have Insi Perez. She got a second place in Brady. And we have a very special student. Edward Esti. I wasn't gonna cry, but I told him, hey, next year you're gonna compete. I was like, okay, ma'am. And I was like, you're looking at me like three times, Edward, and he's like, okay. And he was like, okay, so this is how it goes, Edward, and stuff. This is, you know, if you win, your mannequin will be there and everything. So you get there, and you're like, ma'am, because when mannequin's not there, I can't find it. I was like, Edward, he just won state, and he's like, okay. He did not realize this is the team, but I was like, you see that whole table? You just meet everybody there, and you're gonna be like, okay. I was just so proud. He's come a long way, and he is this amazing man. I can't wait to see what the future holds for all of them. But it is a complete honor to work here and amazing, amazing board members. Now, you showed up to see us, and that was a big deal for us. I was surprised. And it's just been an honor. Thank you so much, and I can't wait to see what it holds for us in the next couple of years. Thank you. One more, I think, Ms. Edeta, for everything you do for us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Perez, would you please come forward to make a break in our HOSA?
Congratulations, congratulations.
We're almost done. Thank you for sitting around. I know I'm second to the last, but it's okay. Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Perez, and I am one of the host advisors for LaFeria Early College High School, and I have been the advisor for the past six years. This year, we were fortunate enough to add an additional person to our family, and that is Ms. Young. However, she wasn't able to be here this evening. Her kids also have awards this evening, or all the week, so that's why she's not here. If I could call my four, two girls that are here out of the four, they can come up, please. Ms. Emily Avila, she's already been up here for a year. She was our HOSA Vice President. Ms. Nisi Avila wasn't here this afternoon or this evening. Ms. Angelis Athoris also was not here, and she is our outgoing HOSA President. And Ms. Cassandra Jolie Garza also appeared previously quite a few times. Each, each member has been a part of HOSA for the past three to four years, so it's really heartbreaking to know that my four girls that are supposed to be up here representing HOSA, a qualifying the state, are leaving us. So it's sad to say goodbye, but it's okay. It's been fun. We've created a lot of memories, and it's been great. This year, Emily, Nisi and Angie and Jolie advanced to state competition in April for medical innovation at Galveston, Texas. And what medical innovation is, is that they have to create or come up with an idea of medical invention or something like that that's going to improve the medical industry. So the girls had an idea, and their hard work or whatever, we came up or they came up with the title of TechnoAid. TC. No, okay. So they, they have to go before they have a presentation, they create a board, and their board has to speak for themselves initially. And the judges vote before and look at all these other boards, and if they like what they see, they're able to go into round two. And round two is their presentation, their verbal presentation of their project. And the way to catch their attention is they decided to do their little spiel, and they're like, TechnoAid! And it worked. So they ended up placing fourth out of additional, I think, total of 25 other groups that were competing in that particular event. And as someone else had mentioned, it is the state of HOSA. And Area 7 is one of the areas, from Laredo down for Area 7, state is all of Texas. And HOSA is a really big organization, excuse me, organization. And again, they placed fourth out of the 25 groups just for their category. I am very proud of their work and dedication that these particular girls have shown throughout the year and their entire HOSA membership, again, three to four years that they've been in it. The upcoming members will have some really big shoes to fill, and I'm gonna miss each of you very, very, too. Thank you.
Ms. Valverde, would you please come forward? Ms. Valverde will present for PPA.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Valverde. I'm the sponsor for PPA Chapter 2. I want to say thank you to the board and our superintendent, Mrs. Thoris, and the board president, Jane Castillo, Jane Castillo, sir. Out of the 21 regional competitors from our PPA, we had 19 that made it to state. Unfortunately, most of our students are not here. They're competing in UIL in Austin. So our running within the company team was Stella Perez, who came in second place, Aubrey Kamdu, who came in third place, and fourth place was Chris Velazquez. Third place, first place was Felicia Salazar. Second place was Estrella Torres. For making and finance, second place was Jose Vasquez. Third place was Esteban Ondiveros. Fourth place was River Garcia. For personal finance, second place was Carolina Rodriguez. Fourth place was Valeria Sarate. For device configuration, first place was Alexander Garcia. Second place was Chris Gomez, and third place was Mad, Mad, or Madeline Zamorano. For video production team, first place was Olivia Castro and Alicia Cabasos. And for our visual design team, first place team was Mari Zamorano, Felicia Salazar and Lianna Marapitas. I want to say thank you, guys, for supporting us and our PPA team.
Board members, at this time, we will now honor our employees who will be retiring this school year. We will begin with Josefina Valdez. Ms. Valdez, would you please come forward? Ms. Valdez gained 26 years of service to education. We know her as Ms. Josie. Ms. Maria Ihuajardo. Ms. Ihuajardo gained 25 years of service to education. Thank you, board.
And now to continue our board meeting. We do have someone that has signed up for public comment, but before she can do that, I do need to read the, the following guidelines, excuse me. The next item on the agenda is, is open forum for public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the fourth procedure for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address an item agenda to be considered by the board on tonight's agenda or other topic. Anyone who wants to speak during public comment, assign in prior to the start of the meeting at this agenda item or topic they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to address the board. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to five minutes to address the board. The public comment portion of the meeting will allow all speakers who have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the board regarding an item on tonight's agenda or other topic. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own child. If a speaker is seeking more resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District policy DGVA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for finding parent complaints. And policy GF addresses committee member complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or in the central administration office. Thank you, and our first speaker is Mrs. Laura Sanchez.
Good evening. I'm Laura Sanchez. I'm here today to inform the board about what is happening at one of your campuses. For the past two years, my eight-year-old child has been a victim of ongoing bullying in your school district. Through, I've been in contact with the teacher, principal, assistant superintendent. I have exhausted all avenues and reservations. Due to the most recent incidents, I am looking for a safe environment in which my child can attend school and learn without being concerned about being hurt again. I hope and pray that you guys take this serious, because I want my child to be up here getting awards in 10 years. And he's a very smart child, so please look into this. Take your bullying policy very, you know, seriously. I just ask for you guys to, to look into it. I followed all the necessary steps, and I will continue to proceed further if actions are not done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The first information item is the delinquent tax collection report. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Board President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent, my name is Ariana Kurian-Raiñez. I'm an attorney for the LimeBurger firm in Brownsville. I'm happy to be here reporting on your delinquent tax collections for the period of September 2023 up until March 31st of this year. I wish I, I, interesting, all of the presentations, I wish my presentation was as exciting, but it's not. There are numbers, but I promise that they're good numbers. So if you look at your report, you'll see on the third page, our approach. And I usually like to start off with that, our LimeBurger approach. And I like to start in saying, we are a collection firm. So a lot of people have a misunderstanding, oh, you just sell homes, you just wear clothes on homes. And no, we actually work with individual taxpayers in your district to collect these delinquent taxes. So we work with them on a day-to-day, but we also use the tool litigation as our last resort. So with that, we send demand mailings. So we usually in a fiscal year, and this is not a fiscal, a complete fiscal year, but we send ten mailings throughout your fiscal year. And basically, mailings are a notice that is sent to your taxpayers in your jurisdiction or the school's jurisdiction, letting them know that you're delinquent in their property taxes. So these notices lets their, the taxpayer know, hey, you're delinquent, where you can pay, how you can pay, basically our information. And what they can do, if they cannot pay in full, we are allowed by law to get them into payment plans, and we want to do that. We want to help out your taxpayers. So we usually get them in a, in a payment plan if they cannot get, or if they cannot pay those taxes in full. In addition to that, we make day-to-day contact. And by that is we place phone calls. So you, if you enter our office at any day of the week, Monday through Friday, you'll see our litigation assistants and collectors in our office placing calls, receive, and they also receive calls, so placing calls, outbound calls, inbound calls, and they just assist your taxpayer, and they help them out with their account, what they can do, how they can pay, and we get them in our office. Or if not, we give them the options if they cannot go to our office. We know we are located in Brownsville. We do accept wire transfers, mail-ins. And if we're not open, if they can only make it past five, we do have a drop box that they can go to our office, too. In addition to that, and say, if we haven't seen any contact from that taxpayer, we've sent out these notices, we've made those calls, we did go to a taxpayer's home and knock on their door, and hopefully we get attention by that. And by basically letting them know, hey, you owe some taxes, let us help you. How can you pay these taxes? And at times, it may be a vacant lot, right? And so by that, we usually explore the neighborhood. Maybe the neighbors know those people that own that property, or maybe the home is in disrepair or it's just abandoned, but we'll find information by going to that area and getting neighbors or any interested party that may know who owned that property. And we do go based off on the appraisal district records, so we do know who owns it, but just making sure, hey, maybe someone was staying there. So, we do know who owns it, but just making sure, hey, maybe someone was staying there, or they're located somewhere. Oh, so we do go to these homes or these areas. After that is done, we've tried sending these notes, or we've sent out these notices, we've placed these calls, we've gone out to the area, and we still haven't received any contact from these taxpayers. We, in order to get them into a payment plan or pay these taxes in full for your district, we do file a lawsuit. So, on page three of your report, you'll see our litigation summary. And again, this is our last resort. So, after all these efforts are exhausted, we file a lawsuit. And that's basically my job. I'm the one in court every day. So, I understand, even after filing a lawsuit, it scares me sometimes for taxpayers, and we usually let them know, hey, there's still time, but you do need to pay these taxes. We have filed a lawsuit, but there's time. And we usually help them get into a payment plan. If not, that will make them more, also will make them pay these taxes in full. So, during this time, we filed over thirty cases, and just to be exact, thirty-nine, thirty-nine cases, and that was a little over one hundred and seventy-four thousand. We did secure a judgment, or some judgments on behalf of the district during this period. And that was eighteen cases, and that was in a little amount, or an amount a little over one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And you're saying, well, what does that mean? So, after we filed that lawsuit, and we've served all parties, including obviously record owners, lien owners, or any interested parties, and service has gone out, notices have gone out, but yet nobody has paid, nobody has come forward to pay these delinquent taxes owed to your school district, we do secure a judgment on behalf of LaFeria, or on behalf of the district. And so, at that time, we have a judgment, and after that, we can foreclose on the property. But even then, after we secure a judgment, we can still work with a taxpayer up to the day of tax. So, you'll see some numbers there, as I mentioned, judgments, a little over a hundred and fifty-five thousand. But we also filed non-suites and release of judgments, almost at that same amount, a little over a hundred and fifty-four thousand, meaning they came in, we closed out the case, we non-suited the matter, meaning they came in and paid. And so, we closed out, closed out those cases. Maybe they got into a payment plan, and maybe the minimal balance was, or the balance was very minimal, that we non-suited that matter, and we just monitored that payment plan. If not, we did release judgments, meaning they paid that amount in full. So, we did that on behalf of this school district, and that was, again, a little over twenty-eight cases. You'll see some pending litigation that we're working on, that is still in court, being litigated. We see tax warrants. So, your tax warrants will be your typical businesses that are open and owe delinquent taxes, but this is not on their real property, it is on their business personal accounts. This is inventory that they owe, it's taxes. We filed eight tax warrants during this time, and that was a little over twenty-four thousand dollars, meaning we filed a tax warrant, but they came in to pay, and so we got that money back for the district. It was current taxes that they didn't pay, so they got, turned over to us. Pre- litigation activity, we see some cases there that we're working on, it's a little over two hundred and fifty-five thousand as well. Going to collection highlights, and this is why I'm here, page four. So, you'll see a bar graph, and if we look at, or we start off at September 2020 through August of 2021, our delinquent tax report for the district at that time was a little over eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. At that moment, we collected at a thirty-three point sixty-one percent, which was excellent. But it was also pandemic year. We still saw, we, we saw that across the state of Texas, and we're still wondering, collections were very high across the state of Texas during the pandemic. Many, many assumptions, but it was a great year for the district. We then go into September 2021 through August 2022, we were at a twenty-six point, twenty-six point twenty-two percent. So, it did drop a little, but I'll just point out that after that pandemic year, that your delinquent tax roll was at eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or a little over eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That following year, it dropped down to seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars with six point two. So, you saw a drop in your bucket, so needing less people in your jurisdiction or in your district were delinquent. So, that number went down. But then we look at September 2022 through August 2023, we see that number increase, meaning it just went a little higher to seven hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars in delinquent accounts in your school district. And then we see an increase in collections at that point, at a twenty-eight point fifty-one percent for that fiscal year. And now, why I'm here today is reporting on today, or on this period, that's September 2023 up until March of this year, we're at a sixteen point forty-four percent. You might ask, why is it so low? What's happening? We haven't finished the fiscal year, so, but we are almost there. So, we're, we're seeing good numbers. We're, we're sure that we're gonna do, we're gonna increase these collections, and it's not, we haven't finished this, again, going back to the fiscal year, we haven't finished this fiscal year. Twenty-two hundred and three taxes are delinquent, but have not been turned over to us. So, we'll see that big jump after July. So, right now, we are at sixteen point forty-four percent, where we have collected two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the school district. And I do want to point out, if you do have colored copies, and if you don't, I think if it's that in black and white, you will still be able to distinguish the lower number, you'll see eighty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We're not accounting for that number. So, we collected two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, but we're not accounting the eighty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars that we did collect, however, those were refunds that went back. So, we're not trying, we did collect them, but unfortunately, they're marked as refunds, but we just wanted to show you that difference. And the, and the chart below the bar graph, you'll see just your print, it's delinquent tax collections, base tax and buy tax year, a little different. You'll see that 2023 tax year is still missing some amounts, and again, they haven't been turned over to us, but they'll be turned over to us in July, and I'm sure that's gonna help the collections. But we're in a good path. I am sure and confident that we will do as good as last year, if not better. Moving on to our tax sale activities. So, I mentioned earlier that unfortunately, we do perform tax sales. So, after we have filed that lawsuit, after we've secured that judgment on behalf of the school district, and nobody has come forward, we do place properties for tax sales. So, during this reporting period, we had seven tax sales. And from those seven tax sales, we had thirteen, thirteen properties that were up for sale in, or for the school district, meaning maybe we had one in February, March, April, and out of, out of the seven that we had, thirteen were for the school district, and it was for LaFeria Independent School District. We did sell nine, we sold nine properties going, it was a little over a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that went back to the school district for these tax sales. Again, these were taxes that were owed to the school district, going back, that we collected through these tax sales. We did have four that did not go or get to foreclosure, to selling the actual properties, and you might ask why. And so, there we have it, orange, if you get to see, and if you don't have a colored copy of the report, you'll see a slice that is smaller than your bigger pie, and it says full PA. And you might ask, what is that? And that's a full payment agreement, and we had four of them. So, as I mentioned, we've worked with your taxpayer up until the date of the tax sale. So, say even thirty minutes before the tax, so a taxpayer comes in with the monies, or just says, I do not have the full amount, but I can give you half them. We will expect that we will get a written contract, it will be on file, and we will monitor those payment plans. We want to work with your taxpayers, especially if it is their homestead. We do not, so, we try to stay away from voiding and selling homesteads. We understand it's difficult times, and we want to work with them, but we also understand we have a job to do in collecting delinquent taxes. And in, just talking about that, there are cases or accounts that we cannot touch. And by that is bankruptcy cases. There's twenty-six accounts that are currently in bankruptcy with the school district, or when not with the school district, but are in the jurisdiction of the school district, and that amounts to a little over forty-five thousand dollars that is owed to the school district that we cannot touch legally. We cannot touch those because they are in bankruptcy. But we do monitor those bankruptcy accounts in federal court, and once they are lift, or once they are dismissed or discharged from bankruptcy, we proceed with litigation. If not, with a payment plan, if the taxpayer does have the monies to, to do that or to pay in full. So, we do have, we're monitoring twenty-six accounts for the district in bankruptcy for our future overview. So, I mentioned payment agreements a lot throughout this presentation, and currently we have forty-two payment agreements totaling a little over seventy-eight thousand dollars in delinquent taxes owed to the school district. So, we will continue monitoring. We know times are difficult, but we also monitor these payment plans and let taxpayers know, hey, you're a month behind. Our contract, our agreement, our terms are very specific in that, in those contracts. And so, we have full staff of employees at our office that do monitor these payment plans, and they're on it, they will call a taxpayer, just see what's happening, and we'll work with them. But we will continue monitoring these payment plans for the district. We will continue securing judgments and filing lawsuits if needed, and we will continue monitoring those bankruptcy accounts. For the mailings, so, we had one in April, we have one coming up in May, and we have one in July. So, we will continue sending out notices on behalf of the school district, letting taxpayers in your jurisdiction know that they, they are delinquent, but we are here to collect those delinquent taxes and help them in any manner they cannot pay these taxes in full. We will continue scheduling property tax sales. Our next tax sale is in June, so that's around the corner. But that is all that I have for today. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions of Ms. Ariana?
Good job. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are three items on the consent agenda, the monthly tax report, budget amendment number two, and the low attendance waiver. Do I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda? I have a motion by Mrs. Montalvo. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Martinez. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, six zero. The first item to consider and possible action is purchase orders over fifty thousand. Discussion and consideration to consider and take possible action on purchase orders of HMH Science Curriculum.
Good evening, Madam President, Mrs. Castillo, members of the board, and Superintendent Mrs. Flores. Tonight, we are reading a forward textbook adoption for science. The current, the science that we are currently using is over ten years old. We did have a two-year gap, so we were purchasing the science curriculum that we had. We had a timeline, we followed. We basically informed our teachers that they could come and visit CNI, that they were able to see the different adoptions that we had for science. We even opened it up for the community to come and see it as well. We finally met, we voted, and right now, HMH is what we are suggesting, proposing to you all for approval. We will be using our instructional materials allotment to pay for this. This will come out to three hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Any questions of Mr. Flores?
Madam President, I move that we approve the purchase of textbooks from HMH Science Curriculum.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Martinez. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of textbooks from HMH Science Curriculum. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, six zero. The next item in this discussion to consider and take possible action on purchase orders of door hardware from IDN Acne.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, Ms. Flores, board members. A genetic 882 is a request to purchase exterior door hardware supplies in the amount of eighty-one thousand fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents from IDN Acne. These materials are to upgrade our exterior doors to comply with the new safety requirements. Our staff will be doing the work as opposed to contracting the work out. We will be using the state safety grant cards to pay for these materials and the staff's time. We do recommend approval. If you have questions, the board can mind out.
Questions of Mr. Flores? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move that we approve the purchase of door hardware from IDN Acne.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Montalvo. Been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of door hardware from IDN Acne. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, six zero. The next item in this discussion and consideration to approve vehicles for the future police department pending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, Ms. Flores, board members. A genetic 883 is a request to purchase three vehicles that were assumed to be established for the police department. We did discuss this at our budget workshop last month. The amount is from, is for ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars from Colco Country Chevrolet, and they're a tasking buyboard vendor. And this, we did discuss this at the last budget workshop, it is coming from the reserves, but we do recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move we approve the purchase of three vehicles for the future police department pending approval.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Martinez. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of three vehicles for the future police department pending approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, six zero. Next item, discussion and consideration to purchase a suburban for CTE program.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, Ms. Flores, board members. A genetic 884 is a request to purchase one vehicle, a ten-passenger suburban in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars from Colco Country Chevrolet, again, a tasking buyboard vendor. The current technology department is in need to purchase an additional vehicle to be able to transport staff and students. This year, we did increase the numbers of students taking current technology courses, and thus increase our funding. There is a need for the, this vehicle in that program. We do recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mrs. Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Montalvo. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a suburban for the CTE program. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, six zero. Next item, discussion and consideration to approve the position of director for teaching and learning.
Yes, Madam President, board members. One of the, one of the adjustments that we have been making is we want our many districts around this are, have applied for the TIA Teacher Incentive Alotment Grant, and we have not. It's a year process. Mr. Flores began the process, working with Region 15, they got a grant that will help us out. It's kind of like when we apply for the early college high school, there's a lot of steps that you'd have to take to get to that point. But when you see in other districts that teachers are getting six thousand, nine thousand dollars because they met the growth, it's from the teacher incentive allotment. This position would be paid local the first year, and after that, it would be paid with the grant. And so, it is with the recommendation that, that we create that position of Director of Teaching and Learning.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move we approve the position of Director of Teaching and Learning.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Martinez. Has been moved and seconded to approve the position of Director for Teaching and Learning. Any further discussion?
Is there like a link on the grant?
A link?
Or is it like something that would be repeating every year?
Right. Once you, once you, what you can, once you are approved, it's kind of like the early college high school. Every year, they designate that you have met the requirements, as long as we meet all the requirements, it continues. So, the very first year, you're getting your T-test observations lined up, you're getting the SLOs, you're making sure you're getting those growth areas. Then, if you're approved in April, everything has been set, and the next year, students qualify.